Good evening. I'd like to call the February 24th regular LaPorte County Council meeting to order. If everybody would please silence their phones, stand for the pledge and then a moment of silence afterwards. Thank you.
Mr. Santana.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, Madam Auditor.
Mr. Garner.
Here.
Mr. Novak.
Here.
Mr. Mullenauer. Mr. Santana.
Present.
Mr. Quinn.
Here.
Mr. Rosenbaum.
Present.
And, did I say Mr. Yagelski? Mr. Yagelski.
Present.
Acor, Ms. Present.
Thank you. Approval of the February 24th agenda and before somebody fires off a motion to approve, like to add under our number four B, under that, let's just say, permission to hire for a retirement in the clerk's office. We talked about this last month and we weren't sure on the clarification on that and I worked with the auditor's office and HR and she is owed a person, so I'd like to add that under that. The other item that we're going to do is number three on there. We're going to hold off on that one now because it's for improvements in the closet and they're making improvements and things have been done, so at this time we're going to wait and see if that takes care of everything they need to do. So, what's your pleasure?
Make a motion with the adjustments made.
You have a motion and a second. Is there any other questions? Are you done? All those favor say aye?
Aye.
Those opposed?
Thank you.
Approval of the January 27th to 2020 meeting minutes.
One very minor correction or addition. Under nominations for council president, the last paragraph, President Novak noted that Councilman Garner is participating in the meeting. Just didn't say who was participating remotely.
Right. You make those corrections, Madam Auditor?
Yes, I will. Thank you.
Is that a motion with the corrections?
Yes.
Mr. Quinn, is there a second?
Second.
You have a motion and a second. Is there any questions? Are you done? All those favor say aye?
Aye.
Those opposed? Thank you. Public comment. Public comment is now open. Anybody from the public would like to speak, welcome to come up and talk now. Anybody from the public that would like to speak can come up now. Last time. Public comment is now closed. Department head reports. Look at this. It's like, yeah, like the wedding march ought to be planned. You guys work so well together. That's all I was implying. Come on. Get your heads out of the gutter.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Larry and Darlene.
Yes, Darlene Hale, IT Director.
Larry Levandowski, Director of Facilities. As you know, Darlene and I have met with Kathy per the request of the council and the commissioner.
Kathy Crowback?
Yes.
The clerk?
We've started, so we started working on the scanning of the books. We currently, right now, we put a plan together. And I know last time, Mr. Quinn, you wanted to know some kind of a plan. So, we have been working with Kathy. We got a plan together. Originally, right now, we've got Casey Foreman, which is under the maintenance department. We've got two IT and maintenance part-time people also working. We've got them set up in a room where they're doing the scanning.
So, scanning currently is only doing these RJO books, which are the court order books. And they've approximately got a hundred or so of those done in a week and a half. I mean, there's hundreds and hundreds of them to do, but at least they're making a progress. Once they're scanned, then the clerk will be able to see them on their computer and then Larry has found.
Yeah. What we've done is, these books are all stacked on top of the cabinets around. So, we're trying to get through these first. We're going to move them. We've found an area in the lower part of the complex here. It's a secured area. There's no water run through it because it's not damp. We can get these books moved down to there where they're out of the way and secured at a basement level.
Once they're all scanned in.
And explain what these books are.
So, these are original court order books. And so, that's all that is pertaining into these. And you know, it tells you on the back whether it's criminal, small claims, what year it is, what month it is, and the dates.
And the judges want those retained.
As far as, yes. As far as I know, Kathy, you know, has said yes, that they do want these retained because they have signatures and.
Mr. Yagelski.
So, what is the law, the retention, retaining of the facts? How, what does the law state?
On this court order books?
Do you have any idea?
I don't know.
The judge says it's, I think the judge says, I think that's, and Mr. Quinn, when we met with them, I think that's what we were told is the judges want them retained.
So, I guess the question is, I haven't seen that in things from 1930, 1940, because we've been through, you know, we went through these basements. So, where's all the permanent 30s and 40s and 50s?
Over there.
Some of these are, what, you scanned some 1920s?
Well, we were playing with those to start with, but right now, we're like in the 90s.
So, the 30s and 40s are where?
I think they're all in the courthouse.
Yeah.
Well, in both courthouses, sorry. Yeah. The big, the big books are the older ones. What year do you remember when these?
Can we have her come up?
Repeat what she's saying. She's got it on the mic, guys.
So, these are, I think we started in 1990 on these.
Got away from the big books.
Yes.
But the record showed that Lynn is nodding her head, yes.
Yeah. What we're trying to do is we're trying to.
So, the big books are completely separate. We're not messing with those at all.
Right.
There's hundreds of these that are sitting inside the room. We're trying to get through these first to get some of this accumulated books down and get them moved out of the.
And when Commissioner Quinn and I took the, I'll let you go ahead and talk.
Oh, I just wanted to mention, are you focusing right now in the vault area?
No, we've been working just strictly on the second floor right now of the courthouse.
Because from, from what I saw, there are RJO books in the vault. There are RJO books in multiple places on the second floor. There are RJO books in the basement. So, they're, they're stored in various locations. So, right now, you're working on the second floor.
Straight on the second floor.
And the girls we've got, we've got two part-time girls. They're averaging five to six books a day that they're going through.
And currently, they are working more than 28 hours a week just because of this project and trying to get a handle on it. But we can cut them back as long as we don't go over the average, you know, for the year. Mr. Yagelski?
Yes, both attorneys are here. I know sometimes you guys play judges, but anyway, Mr. Friedman on TV. But is it at some point feasibly possible that they're going to say, you know, for 200 years of existence, you have to keep these books? Or is it, do we see some future that you guys have heard? Or?
I've not heard anything from the Supreme Court. Anybody else? How about the previous clerk that's somewhat talking about it?
Is there been any talking clerk? Come on down, Lynn.
It's not a cloak thing. I think it's a Supreme Court.
Right, but I'm just wondering where she got her.
Right. It's a permanent record. This record is also in the court file, but then since this has a judge's signature, it had to be put in a different RJO book, which is records of orders and judgments. So, they're permanent records, no matter if they're even on a small, the original books from the 30s and are big and very solid bound. But then that was by standards, by the Supreme Court, they allow the clerks to go to a less permanent type of a folder.
But by scanning them and making them searchable by the computer.
By the date. Actually, it's all by date. So, every page is a date.
But they're searchable. We can take this big bulky thing and put a store them on, and we don't even have to have them stored on site necessarily.
And we usually, if we had any, I mean, we always ran a film. I don't know, is Kathy going to produce it? Pay for a film?
We did have film, right?
Oh, my God. That was the only way that if, for some reason, if they did, we had the backup film.
Well, we're doing it on a computer. We're doing a different program now.
So, we're scanning them in as PDFs, but we're keeping these.
Because I don't believe the film is, they're doing film anymore.
Right. It's on microfilm. Right. It's over there stored.
Correct. But we're also.
Boat was the company that I use for film.
Right.
But if I'm not mistaken, at some point, we're going to have to take the microfilm and maybe convert that because it's getting older, isn't it?
Yeah, they're not sure on that. But yes, that would be the option would be.
He's unanswered.
Statute requires a keeping of the judgment docket. The question I think we have to put to the Supreme Court, the court administration offices, does a scan copy suffice, as Mr. Yagelski says, or does it not? I mean, is there, there is to be a permanent copy at the circuit court judgment docket. So, would that not be sufficient or not? We can run the question past.
I guess that question would be, could, I think you're with the courts, right?
Mm-hmm.
You're going to get together and ask the judges that have a meeting on it and see what we can do to probably get an answer for it. I believe we have to keep it, but I believe you can keep it on other means. I don't think you have to keep the original.
Right. Yeah, guarantee it's been addressed in some other county. Let us go ahead.
It's the Supreme Court except electronic filings now.
Filing style. Filing's all the time. That's how, you know, the state court administration has emphasized electronic discovery.
Right. So, at least by us scanning these books, we're getting a jump on it. And then at some point, if they say we don't need to maintain the physical part of it and we have a backup to the system that we have, we're way ahead of it.
We'll get your formal opinion.
Right. Because these books are all sitting on top of the file cabinets that we're trying to get to and take care of. So, continue. Thank you, Sean.
About the filing cabinets, but tomorrow, Casey is going to start training on scanning into Odyssey, the actual files. I talked to Kathy tonight and she said that her, Casey's ID came back. So, we have that now. And she's going to start that training tomorrow.
For Odyssey.
For Odyssey. And that's just the individual files.
Right. And then speaking with Kathy today, she's going to work with you guys to try and hire, she has four part-time people that she hasn't hired this year. She's going to try and hire at least two of them because we're not sure, four of them, if she's got room for them, but we're concerned about how much room you have.
We've got plenty of room up there. The way we set the room up.
Well, it looks great.
We've got six scanners going at one time up there if we need to. But getting on to the file cams, right now, last week, we pulled 10 cartons of array scan files from upstairs. As I've talked with Kathy, we're going to set up, so we're scanning every Thursday and Friday. I've got the.
You're shredding everything.
We're shredding.
We're scanning every day, right.
Yeah. Scanning, we're doing so much. But we're going to start shredding every Thursday and Friday. So, our guys are all set. We know what needs to go down when we get it. So, we've got seven cabins right now, seven or eight cabins that are empty upstairs. But again, they have these books stacked on, so I'm not moving them out yet. There's also, we talked to her today, yet, there's another 11 cabins that are already shredded or scanned. We're researching whether or not we can shred those or if those have been kept right now because of juvenile.
No, those are pro se. So, those are small claims or whatever that.
Represented themselves.
Correct. So, she was going to find out if we had to keep those files. They're already scanned into Odyssey, but we don't know the answer. We can shred them.
But at the least by them being scanned, those cameras could be moved to another storage place.
Well, that's what we're asking.
And they're still searchable and they're there. So, that's the key thing is we don't have all those old file cabinets up there.
Roughly, we have about 18 file cams right now that can be removed out of that second floor right now. I mean.
Eight on one side and 11 on the other.
It's moving.
Okay, you said that once these books are done, you're securing them in another location.
Right.
Do they come out of these empties, these empty file cabinets? I mean, how are we storing them? We're storing them on shelves? How are we storing them? You know, you're relocating them.
We're going to shovel them up, put them on shelves so that way they stay in the year and the order.
Okay. That was the other concern is that, as was mentioned, we have here, we have there, we have everywhere, but can you find something?
Right. We put it back in order so that it can be found right in the years that it was taken. We're being very explicit.
Based on court, too. So, one wall is going to be Superior Three, the other wall will be Circuit Four, I don't know, something to that effect.
We're organizing it.
No, I get it. I'm refraining comment.
You know, possibly the, you know, ideal that we had talked about was in the future, you know, if we could get some kind of like a document department or something created, Casey being the only full-time person, and then housing it or manning it with part-time people, then any office could use them to scan, you know, and that's way.
Because there's a lot of other offices that have a lot of files and stuff piled up too. So, Mr. Quinn?
So, it sounds like you're starting with the RJO books as well as some five.
Correct. The files will start tomorrow.
Closed files?
Yes.
Because the current files are being scanned as pleadings are filed usually electronically now. But what's the plan after the RJO books are done and we get the closed case files done? I know there are a bunch of other different types of records, fee records. There are books, you know, with, you know, marriage licenses, you know, all types of different things that the clerk keeps. Is there, what's the next step in that process, scanning process?
Well, we really hadn't gotten that far. We were doing good. Guess this.
We looked at this and there's so many of these, the files, cabinets, plus the books. So, we've been trying to concentrate and we figured as we get going, we're learning it ourselves, to be honest with you, Sean. And we're trying to put it together in a good organized manner. And we figured the books would be the first thing. It was a good learning thing with our part-timers. We saw how fast they're moving through it. Now, we're getting into the files. We're going to see how fast that'll go. So, if we can keep two people on files, two people on the books, we can keep moving along with everything and then see how that progresses. It's going to be hard to even determine until we can start seeing this dwindle down.
Is the plan to put the files that are in the cabinets into Odyssey or some of those?
The files will go into Odyssey.
They're all going into Odyssey even though Odyssey says you don't need to put them in there.
Yeah.
Okay. I just want to go back to some of the things you've been saying. You're using people from your department. I now heard that there are four part-time positions possibly with the clerk's department. Why are we not funding their people that are doing this work from those funds?
And that's possibly.
We talked to Kathy.
We hadn't gotten that far yet.
But we did talk to Kathy about it today. And we're going to sit down and talk with her and figure it out a little bit better tomorrow.
All right. Mark.
Really quick. We will, I'm sorry, thank you. We will, I was going to get to my report coming out because I have a copy of it, but the answer for me, they're going to run out of money in their funds. They're part-time people would come, so we're going to have to transfer money. That's up to us to transfer it. So, we can transfer the money out of any account we want to or generate that. That's up to us.
But if we're doing, I mean, it's one thing to do a little bit of service to cross pollinate, you know, we know that a couple other offices or a couple other departments, I should say, share some employees back and forth to help during busy times and it works rather well. But here I see as a one-sided event. But I just. And it's a necessary event. I just want to stop you. I just said that we had conversations with her as recent as today, that she's going to hire these people with the help of.
IT.
Darlene, IT.
Maintenance.
To make sure that it's somebody that can do this out of her office. She's so, they got it started and we're going to switch it, hopefully switch it over to her people. And then when they run out of money, we're going to go back to her funds too. That's why I hadn't heard that, that we're going to switch it over. Right. That's the plan. So, right. And then they get their, now Casey may stay over there because Casey, when we eliminated in-house printing, we needed to find a place for her anyway. So, she may stay over there, but as far as the part-time people, they'll get their part-time people back is what the plan is. So.
And actually, I was working with the animal shelter and I borrowed one of her part-time people also. So, I mean, we're working with other departments to utilize their part-time people.
I understand that two of you are working the problem. She's been, she's been involved.
Kathy has been working with us.
Through three years and now we're getting it done.
Well, we are, we are moving along. I mean, it's been a joined effort to get this where we're at.
Right. I just want to, and this isn't, this issue just didn't start today, yesterday, the last eight years. I mean, this is, you know, with the clerk's office, when you're going to save every document and they had no e-filings up until now, I mean, it's just, it's just a matter of stuff just accumulating over the years. So, but she's been, she's been cooperative.
Yes.
When Sean and I met with her, she was very, things went well. I, this is just, and I look on the bright side of things, try to. But I think there was a big misunderstanding at our last meeting is the way I kind of took it.
She was talking about the big books.
Right. She came before us for $30,000. She takes old, what would you call those, Lynn? The old books?
Some of them bind up the worst.
Right.
Yeah, judgment.
Judgment books. And they're, they're old. They're from like the turn of the century. And they're taking the pages out, laminating them and putting them in new binders. That's not eliminating any of this problem and the stuff stacked up around there. So, that's, it's two totally separate things that, yeah, so. Man, in November, she was asked to come to us with a plan in January. It didn't happen. Okay? We're now in February. We have other people coming to us with a half of a plan. So, she still hasn't come to us with a plan and it's her responsibility for all of these files. Period. That's my point.
Point well taken.
Okay. Any other questions?
Can you finish with this conversation? I have to ask something.
Yes.
Real quick, as I'm going to come up on mine.
Thank you.
As I'm coming up on mine, you asked me about where, I don't have a number yet of what we're saving as far as with in-house printing. We already have a lot of money we're going to save that you're in paper. Can you give out what you're able to do under your contract paper?
Well, what we were able to do, we were able to work out something with the paper company that we purchased a complete semi and then ended up, we're saving by a little under $12,000 just on the paper purchase because what we did is we bought it, we did, we made a deal with them and they gave it to us at a lot lesser rate. So, we brought it all in at one time, put it in a nice, dry area. There's no water in the area. So, it's going to, it's a good, no humidity and stuff. So, now our paper's on site where we can control exactly what's going out to everybody too. So, we got, right now, we're working with, as it goes out, it only goes through this, the maintenance department. We log every department, how much paper they get, when they get it and everything. So, anybody asks, we're going to be able to pull it up and say, the auditor's got this much paper up to this date. The, you know, yeah.
Always.
But, you know, it's, you know, but we've got a good, but we were able to save a good chunk of money, you know, from what we did last year.
Right.
I do have one more comment. Just that probably next month, I will need to come back and ask maybe for some equipment and other, if she doesn't, if Kathy doesn't have extra scanning equipment, you know, we may have to buy a couple PCs and a couple scanners. So, thank you.
Thank you.
That could come out of that fund too. That could come out of her, yeah, that could come out of that fund. You know which one I'm talking about. Is there anybody other department heads? Please state your name.
Steve Ira. How are you this evening?
Good, you?
Good, good. I just wanted to do a quick update about Criminal Rule 26 and let you know that currently we have, and this is because Mr. Rosenbaum is here, I'm throwing the numbers out first. We have 155 individuals under pre-trial supervision. Of those, 77 have come under supervision since January 1st. So, since we had had some being sent to us before then, but as of January 1st, we received 77 people. Eight of them have completed satisfactory. Four were revoked for being arrested on a new offense and three were terminated for technical violations. One was for a failure to appear in two or for drug tests, possible drug tests. So, overall, that's a pretty good average. I didn't do the math. I figured, you know, get the percentages out. I can tell you though that we're getting stretched kind of thin. This morning was particularly difficult. We had 11 new arrests to interview, do background investigations, NCIC record checks and bond reports to the court by 11 o'clock. They did make it through, but it was, it was a rough morning. Secretary is having a very difficult time keeping up with the jobs because she is part-time. And at some point, I'm probably going to come and request that convert to full. We're utilizing my other probation officer who's normally out of community corrections to help us with walk-in people. So, if somebody posts bond, they're told to come to see us on the next morning. And when they walk in, the other staff is already in the jail doing interviews. So, we have this officer help do interviews with those people. So far, pre-trial officers have accrued about 31 in court hours of comp time since the beginning of the year, trying to get all this stuff done. So, we're keeping our head above water, but slightly. But things are coming along. We're doing well. Still working out a couple kinks here and there, but overall, it's going pretty well.
Great. And I'll just add, with the conversation that I had with the sheriff too, that I know the jail, I think the overtime is getting up there a little bit too with shuffling the people around. So.
Right.
Depends on the population and the.
They've been the most helpful bending over backwards. I mean, the jail staff and Sheriff Boyd and his department have been nothing but the best. I mean, I just cannot applaud him and his staff enough. They have helped us out tremendously.
Thank you for the report. I have one more question.
Yes, oh, I'm sorry.
Do we have a bed count as of this morning? 3:45.
Yeah, 3:45.
Wasn't that, is that correct, Sheriff?
3:53.
Close.
Yeah, give or take.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Eyes off, eyes off by eight, so. Any other department heads would like to speak? Are you here as the previous clerk or?
No, I get to be the Board of Finance. Another new name. Okay, so Lynn Spieback, LaPorte County Treasurer, just as a courtesy with the Board of Finance, the interest that was collected last year from all accounts put together in CDs throughout the year was $1,825,620.52. We had a few accounts that also, we invested for them for the major bridge, the cumulative bridge and the reassessment funds, and they collected close to another $200,000. So, actually, last year, we made just about $2 million in interest that went into, the 1.8 went into the general fund and then the $200,000 went back into the accounts that we invested in. So, that was just my courtesy notice for you guys.
Wow. Thank you, Mr. Yagelski.
One question to ask. How much money did we receive for the money that we have accumulated for our 10-year investment fund that we have for the government?
I think that goes all into the cumulative.
We have paperwork separates that. So, we're supposed, that money's supposed to go all back into the fund. So, that's supposed to build with our fund. So, there's something wrong in that one figure and I couldn't, and I heard the commissioner's meeting. So, we have documentation how that's supposed to be put back until we get reach $10 million.
The emergency reserve fund?
Yes.
That's not my Board of Finance.
The money's invested, the interest should go back into that account.
Okay, so then that would be something that I would have not.
This has been going for 12 years.
Right, but we don't accrue interest on that fund. She invests the other funds, but she hasn't really, first of all, if you'll remember, we put that back starting last year at the beginning. Can you pull that up?
So, like the rainy day fund, we don't invest that separately.
Yeah. It's all invested together and it goes.
But the accrued interest, the way it was developed.
If that's, if that's the way you want us to do that.
Well, it was written that way 20 years ago. I want it to be the same way we wrote it. Paper's been.
But then it zeroed out and I don't know, what year did you get zeroed out?
Because we paid off the jail.
Right. So, that was like in 2000.
And then we took out the money to help us get through the finances during the tax situation.
Correct. I thought we zeroed it out twice.
Yes, well, it was the two times.
But we also took out 8 million to do the radios, 800 megahertz.
Correct.
Right. So, then that's when we started replenishing it and.
We should have interest secured.
That's only two years. I mean, right, we can go with that, but it's only been two years since that, the radios were just two years ago.
When was this started?
Still, there's like $8 million in there.
I know, but.
No, I'm.
We started, we started last year with 4.9 million in that account.
So, where's that fund making money at?
It's not making money right now.
It's in a non-interest bearing account?
It's in a non-interest bearing account.
But we, we take like 10 million, 20 million cumulative and invest that.
Right. We take all.
Right, we take all of our funds together.
I get, but why isn't it in an account, a savings account that makes?
But see, we're predominantly putting it in CDs, so it'd be like 45 days that you guys would not be able to spend money from that account until the CD recs was matured.
But then I think in your report, you also mentioned that in the regular accounts, like bank accounts, those draw interest too, right?
Right.
For the money that's just sitting in your checking account, let's say, for, to make it easier.
Well, I don't know about that. You'll have to answer that.
In the checking account, that we pay bills with regularly. That draws interest.
Right, 25 cents.
So why wouldn't the emergency reserve fund that has $90 million?
20 years ago.
Be making some interest?
Yeah, but that is, it's going to the general fund instead of back into that particular bucket.
I'm not disagreeing, but that's not the way it was written. Somehow it's changed, it shouldn't have changed.
Okay.
It's cumulative in that fund till we reach $10 million.
Okay, we can make it like the major bridge.
And $10 million goes back to the general fund.
Right.
And then, right, but you guys do River, I mean, yeah, rainy day is separate from Riverboat, so we can do that.
Rainy day is emergency reserve. We changed the name of it.
Correct.
Because they had to.
Okay.
But I'm, yeah, I was, I just...
We get a dollar amount from the auditor and then we can go ahead and toss it out, knowing we're not gonna spend it within 60 days.
Right.
Or something.
We actually know that, the money there is only for a long-term basis than that $10 million. Now it's 4.9 million, but working our way back to 10 million. It could be for the building, it could be not. But we know it's not gonna be spent for a year. We don't need it to be put in 30, 60, 90. You can...
Okay, you, you're telling me that you're, you know for sure, we won't, if it's over 6 million or whatever right now?
I've been asked before, because when we had money put away for the payment that we paid for the double track, we knew the dates and times, and we kept that money in there, and we let it go for years at a time. Joey, you remember those conversations we had?
Right.
This is not unusual.
Right.
Right, but I wasn't unaware that it was supposed to be set up that particular way.
And just, so everybody understands, the Board of Finance by statute is the county treasurer and the commissioners.
Correct.
So that's the way it's made up, because I got several questions when we seen, I got an email that said there's a Board of Finance meeting and they won't invite us.
Thank you, Peter.
It's the way it is, so. Thank you.
I met with the proper people, by state statute.
Good job. Thank you.
Okay.
Any other department heads? Good evening, Bob.
I'm calling from the poor county coroner. I'm not gonna ask for a vehicle if that's real.
Thank God.
I got two last year. I sat last part of the meeting, so I thought I'd better not ask.
You must have missed the workshop.
No, I forgot the end of it.
Okay, all right, that's all.
I just want to share something very briefly with you. I shared this with the county commissioners last, it's a last meeting. Last, a year ago, we signed an MOU, or mutual aid agreement with St. Joe County. If we have a mass catastrophe in this county, they'll come to our aid. Now we've had, now we have Casiosco, Marshall, and Fulton County, and probably Elkhart County. So the title we're going by is County of One. If we have something, anything happen, and that, it could be at the prison, South Shore, Notre Dame, the airport, any place within any of our counties, we don't have to wait hours, minutes. And we're gonna share not only vehicles, equipment, but also intellect too. Because every one of, all the corners, offices are involved in this. It's not gonna cost our county a dime. Everybody's volunteering our time. We all signed this mutual aid agreement. So I just want to give you up to date. A year from now, now we have five counties. It looks like we're gonna have six all in this area.
Great, great. Excellent. Is EMA doing that? Is this similar to what EMA?
It's totally different. This is just, well, I shouldn't say that. They will be working with us. But what we have now is that we have vehicles and expertise from not just our county, but now we have five other counties that will be here at a moment's notice. And in each one are all certified coroners and deputy coroners, and they'll, if it happens in our county, they'll all report to me. And like I say, it'll, it'll be minutes.
That's great.
So anyway, I just want to give you...
I hope you never have to use them, Bob.
I do too. I do too. It's always the old what ifs.
You're doing a great job. Thank you.
Thanks, Bob.
So any other department heads?
Mr. President, I would like to inform you that the county home sold this afternoon for $50,000.
Could you state your name, please, so everybody can know?
One buyer.
Yes.
And it was advertised. I got an email tonight that said that we didn't advertise it. It was advertised on February 12th and February 19th, according to the state statute. So...
And it sold for?
$50,000.
Right, minimum bid.
And then I would also like to remind you all that the commissioner's certificate sale is March 12th in this room at 8:30.
Mr. Yagowski.
Mrs. Winski, so was there a person of real estate that sold it, or was it auctioneer?
It was not, actually, it was our tax sale attorney who auctioned it off. Yes.
So along, you know, like with auctioneers, they send out pamphlets. Was there anything else sent out except for just the legal notice? Is that all we did, is just the legal notice?
That I couldn't tell you, but I know that we sent it to two papers.
Okay, I thought originally gonna combine this with the commissioners, so we can make it, so everybody could better advertising.
We were going to, but we felt that the council wanted to, the council and the commissioners wanted to get this sold as quickly as possible.
Mr. Santana.
You know, I, I saw that when it was advertised, and I, I got the paperwork on that. How did we arrive at the $50,000 minimum bid? Cause I thought that that was pretty darn low.
It was based on the appraisals that we got.
And we, if I recall, we got appraisals of 60, 100, 600. We had a lot of, like, three different appraisals?
I have them in my email. I didn't bring them with me, but I can get those figures to you.
Okay, my next question is real quick, and, I mean, it's done, it's over, I got you. How many bids did come in?
We had two people that were interested that had called, and they did walk through it. But when, this afternoon, when it started, there was only one person who showed up, so. And I did try to call the other person to see if he was interested also, so.
When will it transfer ownership? Do you have an idea?
As soon as we get the deed and the, like, get the check first. The check has to come, he has till tomorrow at 4 o'clock. And then we will issue a deed, and we'll get him a survey, and that'll be...
Santana.
Not just any conversation?
Probably within a week or two.
And it doesn't matter, I guess, if they don't want to tell us, but any conversation as to what they might have in, you know, vision for it?
Not really. He said something about hospitality, but I, I don't know what that means.
He mentioned about working on the exterior first, then working on the interior. But as far as the plan, I was here for most of that, and it really never alluded to what he was gonna do. Mr., you got something? Oh. Anybody else have any questions? Thank you, Madam Auditor. So somebody else, there he is. Good evening, Al.
Good evening. I'm not a department head, but I've been working in recent weeks with Lepore County Surveyor Tony Hendricks on a flooding groundwater issue in Meterview Estates. Appeared before the county commissioners last week, Wednesday, and wanted to take just a few minutes to provide an update and introduction of some things that come. I've got the little handout. Yes, thank you. So the first page here, just gonna run through these real quick. We just show kind of the yellow rectangle in the center of the map shows the Meterview Estates subdivision, approximately one and a quarter mile south of the city of Lepore. Pages two and three of the handout, for historical purposes, is a copy of Resolution 2010-3 from almost 10 years ago now, March of 2010. There was a point in time where, after a recent emergency declaration by the federal government, the county was pursuing some grant funds to work to resolve this issue. After that resolution was passed in 2010, there were some engineering questions that were unresolved, so the county was not able to move forward with the grant at that time. So it provides some historical context for the county trying to work on this issue about 10 years ago. After the resolution, there's a one-page Excel spreadsheet. It's a tracking log where, within Meterview Estates, there's 42 homes that have excessive pumping of groundwater, mainly in the spring and summer, but some places last all year long into the winter. So with this pump log, we distributed to the neighborhood, and there's 12 different homes that are filling out this log. So every day, they'll go down, look at their pumps, try and get cycle time, and it's given us some good data on what's actually happened over the past winter months, starting in November. The next page, we have the summary, the USGS rain gauge at Kekakee River at Davis. So on this graph here, the blue line represents the measured precipitation at the Kekakee River. So if you see a horizontal blue line, that's a period of very little rain, no rain. Where the blue line jumps up, that's where we've had some significant rainfall. So when we started this tracking of sump pumps with the 12 homeowners, so 12 out of the 40 homeowners, so roughly 25% of the homes experiencing these problems, I've been tracking their sump pumps. When we started in November, we had a relatively dry period in the middle of winter, and three of the 12 homes were pumping continuously. Sump pumps are running continuously, non-stop, from November through today. In November, December, we had some small rain events. Eventually, middle of December, we had a quarter inch rainfall, and three more homes started pumping continuously and have not shut off since middle of December. In December and in January, we had some dry periods, and then in kind of the middle of January, early January, we had a very intense rainfall. We had about three inches rainfall, it was like a Friday night to a Saturday. So there were some localized flooding throughout all northwest Indiana. So at that point, when the rain happened, all remaining six homes that were part of the tracking log program, pumps went out and have not shut off since then. So what we did then, so this shows graphically how many homes were pumping at a given time. And then the next sheet is a map of the neighborhood, and it shows a spatial relationship between the pumps that have been running all winter. The three pumps color-coded in red show homes where the pumps have been running all winter long. Typically, most of the homes in the winter will not be running, but these three were running all winter long. And then in the lower left-hand corner of the map, there's three pink pumps. Those are the pumps that turned on in December. And then the rest of the neighborhood, the orange pumps, were the homes that turned on in January. So the elevation of the neighborhood is from north to south, so we would expect the red pumps to be in the south part of the neighborhood. And then as you move further north, elevation rises a little bit. So those sump pumps turned on a little bit later. The next two pages are a summary report. The commissioners engaged Christopher Burke Engineering last fall to do a summary. There were five different engineering options the county was looking at. They asked us to evaluate those engineering options and come up with recommendations to move forward. By looking at the five options, they seemed feasible, but there's some engineering questions that are not answered yet. And the very last page of the handout is our recommendations, and I just want to review those real quickly. In the recommendation sections, we talk about to better understand the current seasonal groundwater levels and their fluctuations throughout the Meterview Estates subdivision, which is required to be able to adequately assess the final engineering solution. We recommend these following two steps. One, the county worked to engage a geotechnical engineering consultant to install groundwater monitoring wells at strategic locations throughout the subdivision. In our initial discussions with geotech firms, we were proposing to install four groundwater monitoring wells, one in the south side of the affected neighborhood, one in the north side, and one in the east-west to go to good spatial representation and be able to actually measure from elevation down to top of groundwater before and after rainfall, so we can get a history of that groundwater change. On one of the wells, we'll put a transducer to get real-time monitoring, so we can look up at any given point in time, based on rainfall, how the groundwater is reacting. With that data, then also, we would look to then engage a groundwater modeling consultant that can utilize the groundwater level data for either a conceptual analytical groundwater model or more complex aquifer simulation, such as what the USGS uses with their modflow program, to assess the flow of groundwater in the area of interest. So we contacted these potential subconsultants for Task One. We were able to arrive at and not exceed cost of $11,000 to put in the four monitoring wells. We would propose to put in a fifth well in the northern part of the subdivision as a reference point, where homes are not traditionally impacted by the sump pumps. And then working with Mondellin Associates, a very experienced and highly-regarded consultant on groundwater modeling, they would do the groundwater modeling to see which of the five proposed solutions would work best. The main issue is if we put in a pipe to drain the groundwater, to lower the groundwater, one, at this point, we don't know what size of pipe we would need. Two, we don't know what depth of the pipe, so we really need to answer those questions. And then three, as we're lowering the groundwater, we want to do some geotechnical analysis to see how we might be changing the structural capacity of the soil where these homes are. So putting these costs together, total for one and two would be a combined cost of $28,000 to do this engineering work. Went before the commission, county commission last week. They approved a motion to have me appear before the county council, work with county staff to do an official potential appropriations of these funds. So we would have to publish those in the paper and identify the funds. So not requiring the council to do any action tonight, I just wanted to kind of keep you up to speed of what we presented to the county commissioners, and give you some introduction of what might be coming down the road at the next meeting. Moving forward, if the county desires to move in this direction, our vision would be to get these five wells in late March, early April. We'd be ready to mobilize upon authorization to proceed, to be able to capture the April rains, and then how the groundwater reacts May, June, July, as the groundwater recedes. We would do the modeling over the summer, June, July, and August, so August timeframe, we would be in a position to possibly be able to turn this back over to the county and say, based on our analysis, here's the size of the pipe, here's the depth, and then potentially, the county could work with the surveyor's office, county engineer, and county staff to actually potentially do the construction work. So we're just looking to get a way to answer these engineering questions, be able to convey that information to the county, so at some point in the future, potentially, the county could take it back over to implement the project.
Thank you, Mr. Yagowski.
Okay. I do remember when the commissioners came to us last time. We had talked about legal action, about going after the Nox subdivision. Do you know how that stood, where that went after that?
I do not have those answers.
See, that, this was, we don't just get deed of property. We shouldn't be not taking property. So this is a time, we should went after the subdivision owner, because he was still selling property after this time. So one of the questions I would ask. Second question is, because I know you're familiar with, Michigan City attempted the same thing over there in the Village Green Forest Manor area. Has not worked. There's still a lot of homes that are being pumped up, same amount of pumping you're talking about here. So it was a great idea, but it was a federally funded project along with some state, I'm asking, federally or state funded, to do that upon, through a pond?
The stream of pond project was a flood control project to mitigate the 100-year flood event through Kinsel Ditch. So it was not necessarily groundwater...
But I disagree with the case, but it was, it was told to the people that live in Forest Manor and that, and that, because I had a home at, and I got notices that this was going to help. And it did not help one bit of all that, because the people that are still pumping houses, are still pumping houses yet, so.
Yeah, there was no information disseminated that it would impact groundwater.
So Michigan City didn't pick out a budget. Why is it Lepore County's responsibility to take after what they, with a subdivision that's supposed to be taken care of by Nox?
I don't think that's the question.
Right. But these questions were asked then, and that's where it didn't go anywhere, where the county's not responsible for something of a subdivision that was built and sold property to and made a profit off of. And the county didn't receive any of those dollars.
Anybody else have any questions? Thank you, Al.
Thanks.
Appreciate it.
Thanks, Al.
Thank you. Any other department heads? Any other department heads? Hearing none, leaves on reports. We'll start with Mr. Rosenbaum.
I'll pass on any reports tonight.
I'll do the same.
I'm just gonna report. I spoke to the recorder. She has new...
Microphone.
She has new flooring and some improvements in her office to hopefully take care of some health issues that you, the county has had in there.
The ductwork was clean.
And then I also spoke with the auditor, the sheriff, and Brandy and I attended the FEMC meeting last Thursday, and we'll just keep it brief.
Sean?
Well, Larry and Darlene kind of stole my thunder, but yeah, we, Mr. President and I met with the clerk to review this scanning and hopefully shredding or storing off-site of many of the records. records, and it's good to hear the report that things are on the move.
Great. Mr. Yagowski?
Actually, I have a couple. There were some people that asked questions about the last two meetings we had with Kathy Krowback. They said the state board accounts came in and straightened us out. There was nothing to straighten out. They, they came to us, asked for the money, not her, of course. We approved the money. If she spends the money or didn't spend the money, it was up to Kathy at the time, Ms. Krowback, excuse me, at the time. So the last meeting, I know people asked me how it got so ugly, that it just that it was, it was a standoffish idea that it's sort of part, and she can do what she wants to, which we agree, but we still have responsibilities, especially with doing Michigan City, to clean up the area and to try to organize the space we have. So I just want to make sure we understood that. Second of all, we have a two-man hour community crossing grant. We have 32,000 ton of the slag that's coming off of it, that's grindings, and we're going to be putting on different locations, solid waste, the fairgrounds. We put it at the Hessenstein Museum, they agreed to allow us to use the space out there, so we don't have to keep hauling it all around across the county. Good idea, good money, good money savings for the county. This is also, we have, we have equipment to use it for our brimming, so when we do roads, they will now decide for the brim, so that, so we don't, people don't drive off and destroy the corner edges of the roads.
Is that a brim or a berm?
A berm, thank you.
Okay.
Just let me write that down.
Want to make sure we're talking about the same thing?
You got me.
I just, I didn't know what a brim was.
My hat.
Yeah.
My hat. And the last thing is that we did a fantastic job of going to the state, which sold trucks. We bought five trucks at $6,500 apiece. The prices are generally run about $150,000 for those trucks. They have, we also bought one extra truck, which was a all-dual truck that can go out and tow out trucks in case it gets stuck somewhere if we have a really bad winter. It's called a Oshkosh, was the name of the truck. We also bought single axle, that was single axle, I'm sorry, 12 plow blades. Those average about $8,000 apiece. We got them for like $500. So we saved ourselves quite a bit of money, and I commend the highway department for doing that.
That it?
Yep.
Thank you. As Terry stated, I attended the FMEC meeting earlier this year, early this month, I'm sorry. We met with the clerk, redevelopment commission last month, and we have another one on Wednesday this week. We attended one of the courthouse meetings, we'll phone conversation and then a meeting. Attended this recent commissioners meeting and the finance, a board of finance meeting. We had a JDI meeting on the 20th, 911. We met with the 911 director, he was here a minute ago, there he is over there, I knew he was here, on the 13th. Had a great, and just kudos to the Farm Bureau. If you've ever been to one of their events, they have one out in Union Mills at the Conservation Club. It was great. And then today at the county home auction, that was kind of uneventful, except for the county homes sold, so that's all I got. New business. Consider appointment for the Lepore County Regional Sewer and Water District. The names that we have that have been presented to us is Gene Jonas, Joyce Forbes, John Carr, and Mark Danielson.
Mr. President?
Mr. Yagowski?
I'd like to make a motion for John Carr and Mark Danielson.
We have a second. We have a motion and a second. Is there any other questions, any other comments? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Thank you. And I think Mr. Carr's here. Right, so I don't think, Mr. Danielson here too?
No.
All right, same. Congratulations, and thank you for stepping up to serve. Consider approval to transfer from funds for EMS base project facility director Larry Levendowski.
Hello again, everybody.
Hello.
Larry Levendowski, Director of Facilities. As you know, the EMS base is going up, we're doing, going up at a good pace right now, so we've started to analyze things, where we're at with our budget. We've been working really hard at Michigan City, trying to figure out ways to fix it. I know in the past, we've had a lot of discussion about, we've got a lot of leaks with the roof, the siding, it's, it's needing a lot of work. With that, we also had discussion about trying to get the new ambulances that would not fit inside the building. So we went out, we started getting some pricing on it, started redesigning some things, see if we could make work feasible for that building, without getting into some kind of major project. So what we did is, we took, I analyzed the project over here, we found some other ways that we could get some costs in. We got the cost down a little bit more without hurting any of the quality. We took the money that we had, our SSI for Michigan City. What we're needing to do is, we need roughly $26,412 to take, to pull from the Lepore project into that one, and we can get that project done in Michigan City. We do have the money sitting, I sent out a spreadsheet for you. When we're, you know, when we're all set, set and done with the Lepore project, as it's going, we've calculated in a couple of extras that we may have, you know, we're trying to put it in there, we should still end up with about $17,000 left out of this.
So what is the dollar amount that you want to transfer?
Twenty, it'd be $26,412.
$26,412?
Yes.
And Larry, for the public, what's the total cost going to be for Michigan City?
Well, it's, it's in two phases, because we've got the addition, which is $40,000, and it's 50, $40,300, and $53,000 for the roofing, siding, and patient's outfit to get done.
Thank you, Mr. Yagowski.
Mr. President, I don't want to throw a surprise, but I was going to ask Dr. Cora if you wouldn't mind coming to the, if that's okay with you, Mr. President.
That's fine. It's okay with Dr. Cora.
Dr. Cora, I know sometimes you have some insight, I know that we're going to put the money, talk about putting the money there, but there was also some talk about, maybe at some point, the hospital allowing us to do the ambulance base out of the hospital. Has anything changed now, because I don't think, there's been yes and nos, and I guess they were going to try to use that for emergencies, some other type of purpose.
Not the old hospital.
The old hospital, yes.
Correct. The old hospital. You know, what happened was, initially, when the planning was done, there was some talk about moving the ambulance base to the new hospital, but then there was some concern from the community that it's too far, and they wanted it close by, and so that's the reason why we decided to stay in the, within the, close to the city limits and the population centers. So that's the reason why we decided to stay where we're at right now. Now, we did talk a little bit about utilizing, utilizing that space in the old hospital where the old ER was to, but then again, it's going to cost money to change, you have to invest some money, which will probably be more than what we are spending right now to transform that into an ambulance base.
Because I was just asking, is there anything in the plans that's, you know, before we vote it out tonight?
No, we, no, no, we did not, once this plan was set into motion to just refurbish this building for right now, then we didn't pursue that anymore.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks.
What is the, what is the long-term plan for the, for this EMS base? I mean, we're fixing the roof, and you've got to remember, we were there when it was a fire station, so we know what it was like then, so, but what is the, is the long-term plan to maybe try and keep that, and we're going to put other money, because there's other things inside, maybe the living quarters, or is the rest, I haven't been in there in a while?
There's a lot of things, and I toured it again about three weeks ago. You know, we're trying to put pricing together to get some of the walls, just so it makes it a lot better for the people that have to live in it, you know, day in and day out. We're working, part of this is to get some of the ceiling work done, just upgrade what we can without putting, you know, good money into, into bad, you know, but I said, we, we're looking forward and phasing it, is what we're trying to do.
Right, right.
It's our hope that at least with the boat that's being done, at least the next five years.
It's going to buy some time, for sure.
Yes, yes.
We should be looking to find the five.
Right. Thank you, so what's your pleasure? Larry would like permission to transfer $26,412.
Yes.
Mr. President, motion?
Go ahead.
I'll make that motion.
Motion by Mr. Santana?
Mm-hmm.
Seconded by Mr. Yagowski. Is there any other questions, comments? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Larry. Item number four on your list, since we scratched number three. Consider permission to hire for vacant position for the county assessor's office. Good evening, Mike.
Good evening.
Hi. Mr. President, motion approved for A, for A and for B, the one that you asked in addition to the clerk.
We have a motion by Mr. Yagowski for both permission to hire, seconded by Mr. Gardner. Is there any questions? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed?
Nay.
Thank you. One nay.
Only because they were joint.
And he nay'd yours.
No, I don't think it was a nay from mine.
Yeah, yours is why it was yours.
Next item on the agenda is consider appointment to the PETA Bowl Board. We have, oh, that's old business.
Yeah, we're moving over.
Why are you still here?
Because I'm still up here.
What do you got?
Old business. Consider appointment to the PETA Bowl Board. We have Jamal Adjemi and, let me find the other name that's not on that.
Sherri Bannick.
Sherri?
Bob, we approved last meeting.
Correct. You approved me.
Well, when, when.
No, no.
I vetoed it. We approved Bob six to nothing, you guys, last, last meeting.
No, we have two appointments.
You get two appointments.
And you approved Bob and you approved me. I can't serve.
He said couldn't do it.
His was contingent.
Mine was subject to, so I'm not, so now we have to find a replacement.
And so you only have Jamal.
And this person, and Sherri.
Sherri, yeah, Ritter Bannick.
Her name just didn't appear on the thing, on the agenda, so.
I made a motion for Sherri Bannick.
I'll second.
There's a motion for Sherri Bannick, and a second by Mr. Rosenbaum.
If I may, Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
The reason, because I'd asked you when you said you couldn't serve, if you could look for a realtor or someone from Michigan City that knows the market, because this, if it was Jamal, he gives us a realtor from Michigan City that knows Long Beach and the Michigan City market, where we have a, a Lepore person also on there, a realtor that knows the Lepore market, and then we have Bob Bailey from the county that knows farms and basically the county market. So it gives a good balance, because it gives us two people from Michigan City, two people from Lepore, and one person from the county. So you're saying to add?
Not to add. He's saying there's a motion for Sherri.
Correct.
Sherri, I'm going to make Sam's second.
And, okay, so you got a second for that?
And we got a second for that.
I would then also like to nominate a motion for Jamal Adjemi. So we're going to have some sort of runoff here.
Is there a second for Jamal?
Second.
We have a second. So we have two people, so how do you want to do this? Am I monitored?
Say their name or whatever. Say that.
Would you like me to call the rule or no?
And then we just respond by either name?
Right.
Microphone.
Not me? Who are you talking to? He is talking to me.
Me, probably.
Oh, okay.
Okay, Mr. Gardner?
Do you want me to respond?
Just say a last, say a last name.
Bannick.
Mr. Novak?
Adjemi.
Mr. Quinn?
Adjemi.
Mr. Santana?
Adjemi.
Mr. Rosenbaum?
Bannick.
And Mr. Yagowski?
Adjemi.
So Jamal Adjemi has four, and Bannick is two, so it's Jamal Adjemi.
Congratulations, and I want to say thank you to Sherri Bannick and to Jamal Adjemi for willingness to serve. Thank you.
And Mike, thank you for explaining.
Yeah, thanks. Next item is discussion on the liaison assignments for the year 2020. As you noticed, there's been a few changes, people that have offered to change. We've changed, the one thing that's not on there is NERPC. And I also note that Mr. Rosenbaum's going to take over the regional sewer board, and Mr. Quinn said he's okay with that. A lot of the work that's done out there is in his district out there, so.
Mr. President?
Yes, Mr.?
Will there still be a price?
There will, for this year, there will.
Okay, thank you.
Yes. Is there any other suggestions, comments? If not, any motion?
I'll make the motion to approve as, as read here, as far as they've been adjusted for 2020 from 2019.
Is there a second?
Second.
You have no more seconds. Oh, Mr. Quinn, thank you. And you'll notice on the commissioners, the commissioner, even though it's got, I think my name, I put my name in mold in the heart.
You plus, yeah.
Because it's the president and the vice president, so that changes with whoever's sitting up here, so it's not necessarily, and it, there isn't necessarily liaison, I mean, it's, we've had a pretty good working relationship with the commissioners, so. We have a motion and a second, is there any other questions? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Thank you. Correspondents, is there any correspondents?
None.
Ordinances and resolutions. We have resolution 2020-2. Mr. Rosenbaum?
I don't have a copy of it in front of me, or do I?
You don't have a copy of it?
Bear with me. The boy's got a resolution.
I don't know if I brought it with me either. Oh, here it is, here it is. Good deal.
Thank you very much.
There you go.
Here. I'd like to make a motion for a resolution, as I read it, resolution number 2020-2, a resolution of the Lepore County Council honoring Bo Hunter Bresser on his successful completion of all requirements for Scouts BSA highest rank, whereas the Scouts BSA, formerly known as Boy Scouts of America, was incorporated on February 8, 1910, and chartered by the United States Congress in 1916, and whereas for the purpose of Boy Scouts BSA is to provide an educational program for young adults to build character, to train in the responsibilities of citizenship, and to develop self-esteem and personal fitness, and whereas on February 24, 2020, Bo Hunter Bresser, a member of Troop 664 out of New Carlisle, Indiana, in recognition of successful completion of all requirements, was awarded the Scouts highest rank of Eagle Scout, and whereas Lepore County, Indiana feels great pride, honor, success, and the achievement of Eagle Scout Bresser and his hard work, self-sacrifice, and commitment to building character, honor, citizenship, and self-esteem in himself. Now therefore be it resolved that Lepore County Council of Lepore, of Lepore County, Indiana, the administration and the elected officials of the county of Lepore and the citizens of Lepore, Indiana congratulate Eagle Scout Bo Hunter Bresser on his prestigious accomplishments of Scouts highest rank. I also want to add, I do know this young man personally, and on March 29 is his court of honor at Monroe's Crossing, and I will attend, and once this is all signed, I will be presenting it to him at that time.
Great. Thank you. Is that a motion?
That was my motion, I said a motion to begin.
All right, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Gardner, is there any other questions? Could you, could you, as with the other, nevermind, it's already done. I was going to say add us all to sponsors.
Yes, yes, everybody, everybody's listed, and he signed on it, which I thought was very, very inconsistent.
Yep. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Thank you. Appropriations, Lepore County IT requests an additional appropriation from Riverboat or General Fund for multi-factor authentic-ification.
Authentication.
This is to buy Duo software, so, for multi-factor authentication.
Oh, you just make it sound easy, way to go.
We purchase, you know, I would like to purchase 50 for the county side, and then I've talked with Roscoe and Ryan, and we're going to do 50 on the sheriff 911 side, too. It's just so that, you know, when you log into your computer, you're also going to have to authenticate, you know, through your phone.
And it says not to exceed 20, but I think the price is right around 15, isn't it?
15.3 is what it came in at.
Some, do you wanna?
Yeah, fifteen-three's fine with me.
Okay. What's your pleasure?
Make a motion to, um, for additional appropriation, and is there preference, Adam auditor?
Riverboat.
From Riverboat, uh, for multi-factor auth- authentication, not to exceed 15,300.
Second.
We have a motion by Mr. Rosenbaum, seconded by Mr. Gardner, wasn't it? Okay, yep, yep.
Question.
On the question, Mr. Santana?
Yeah, is this a one-time shot, or an ongoing?
No, this'll be a yearly.
And it's not, it's not good out of the general, huh? Um, Ms. Auditor?
Well, you could, but we just prefer the Riverboat, it's up to you.
So next year, you're coming back, and next year, and the next year?
I'll add it to my budget for next year.
Is there any other questions? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed?
Nay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next item on the agenda is LaPorte County Sheriff requesting permission to spend from Sex Offender Fee Fund for conference travel in the amount of fifteen hundred dollars. Is there a motion?
Motion to approve the fifteen hundred dollars.
Second. Is there any questions? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed?
Thank you.
Thank you. Is he still standing?
He's got the commissary thing.
Is he gone yet?
No, I didn't.
Uh, next item on the agenda is LaPorte County Community Corrections requesting permission to spend from the commissary account for parent program implementation in amount of thirty-five hundred dollars. I think you guys would've seen something on this. It's a program out there that they're implementing, uh, it's a very good program. I would like.
Permission to spend thirty-five hundred dollars.
Second.
We have a motion by Mr. Yagowski, seconded by Mr. Rosenbaum. Is there any other questions? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Thank you. LaPorte County Adult Probation for Superior Number Three requesting permission to spend probation user fees to replace a printer in Superior Court III Traffic Division in the amount of six hundred nineteen dollars and ninety-nine cents.
Motion to approve.
We have a motion?
Second.
By Mr. Gardner, seconded by Mr. Rosenbaum, is there any questions? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Thank you.
Could I request?
Yeah. What?
Two computers, uh, permission to spend no more than twenty-five hundred dollars, two, I know it's not there, but it's permission to spend, I spoke to the auditor this morning, she said, absolutely, bring it up tonight. But it's, it, two, two PCs need to be replaced, um, and Darlene is aware of it.
Yeah, thank you.
She's done.
She bailed on me, but, uh, twenty-five hundred dollars for two computers and two Microsoft offices.
Twenty-five hundred each? So five thousand?
Twenty-five hundred.
Twenty-five hundred total. It's coming out of probation user fees?
Yeah, just permission to spend user fees.
Permission to spend? What's your pleasure?
Computers.
We have a, we have a motion by Terry? Is there a second?
I thought, Mike, I'll make the motion, yeah.
I uttered something, but, uh, no, I didn't make it, but I can.
Alright, so we have a motion and a second.
Sure, yeah, a second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Six hundred, twenty-five hundred dollars.
LaPorte County Commissioners requesting additional appropriation in Riverboat, from Riverboat or General Fund for Office of Economic Development, two hundred and twenty thousand dollars, this is for their annual stipend.
Motion to approve of Riverboat, not that we ought to agree to, two hundred and twenty thousand.
We have a, we have a motion, now Mr. Yagowski, and seconded by Mr. Quinn. Is there any questions, comments, or discussion?
Yeah, I do. I guess, I, I've been used to, I guess, the fact that, uh, we've been giving them a stipend at this particular time of like half, and I'm, I'm just wondering, um, I guess, I guess that's a comment, uh.
We adjust my motion, locate the second to a hundred and ten thousand now, and then just come back the other hundred and ten thousand.
Okay. Agree with that, Mr. Quinn?
Yes.
Alright, so the motion is a hundred and ten thousand, as usual, come back, cause Tony's here all the time anyway, so. Um, is there any other questions, comments? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Thank you. That's out of Riverboat.
Thank you.
Thank you, thank you for your support for the office.
Keep up the good work, though. Thank Commissioner.
Yeah, that's okay.
What?
He said thank you, cause I made that comment. That's fine.
LaPorte County Planner requesting additional appropriation from CEDAT for local match on the Union Mill Sidewalk Grant Program in the amount of one hundred and twenty-seven thousand, one hundred and fifty dollars. Good evening, Mitch.
Good evening. Uh, this is essentially a follow-up, back in December, I came in front of this board for a commitment letter, that if I, the county was to receive a grant, I would be back here. Well, I got good news, county received two grants. Um, the first one was the Union Mill Sidewalk Grant, and the match was a hundred and twenty-seven one fifty, and of course, second one was Bridge 97, in amount of two hundred thousand.
Since the motion hasn't been made, I'll make that motion.
Are we doing both, or just one?
I was just gonna do first, uh, the sidewalk.
Yeah.
The sidewalk.
And Union Mill.
From CEDAT Fund, the Union Mill Sidewalk Project Grant, yes.
And I'll second that.
Motion by Mr. Rosenbaum, seconded by Mr. Santana.
And I have a question.
Is there any questions?
Yes, sir. Um, and again, forgive me, because I know you provided it, how much, uh, how much was the grant worth that were received?
The sidewalk or the?
Sidewalk, let's start there.
Sidewalk was five hundred and eight thousand.
So we got a half mill there, and we have to put in one twenty-seven, then if you wanna jump down on the next one, and even?
Eight hundred thousand.
Okay, that was our eighty-twenty.
Yes, it's different.
Beautiful, okay.
Alright, any other questions?
I'll amend my motion and could vote, will you second it?
You betcha I will. Yes, I'll, I'll second.
Alright, so anybody, no objection, alright? Is there any other comments or questions? Hearing none?
Real quick, thank you, Mitch.
Yeah, you're welcome.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you, Mitch.
Thanks, man.
Good job.
Yep.
Next item on the agenda is LaPorte County 911 requesting additional appropriation on Riverboat or General Fund for purchase of the new chairs for the 911 Center. I just wanna go on record before he starts talking, that I was in the 911 Center, as I stated in my liaison reports, and those chairs are bad.
Save the best for last.
They've been bad for a long time, too.
Those are like, uh, I don't even wanna say, like a workman's comp thing waiting to happen.
I'm kinda thinking that was in the pool cards, maybe we can pull some seats out of there, but you know.
Well, they're not as bad as the pool card. Alright, Steve.
Director 911. Um, I guess it's already decided.
Tell us about these, um, what makes these chairs different than the other chairs?
So these are the Iron Horse Chairs, I did some research, I have actually reached out to some local chair, uh, Office Max, but they don't have a comparable with a ten-year warranty, and this will give us a ten-year warranty on the frame, five-year warranty on the structural components, and three-year warranty on the covers, foam and armrest, so, uh, basically, I'm looking for the warranty more than, um, so.
Alright.
They're rated for four hundred pounds and three hundred pounds.
And they're twenty-four seven chairs.
Correct.
They're designed to be.
So they rate them, yeah.
Mr. Yagowski?
Yes, sir. Yeah, as you chairs, that little problem, the chairs, the problem only happens come to fund, but why do we have to take a Riverboat or a General Fund, why isn't that coming out, they can't. Why can't?
She'll tell you, watch, watches.
I already checked with the state, and we cannot buy chairs from the, the state
fund. They're not eligible.
But it's funny, though, because I was.
I don't make some rules.
Wait, wait. So I was here when the, they voted to put this in. And we put chairs and councils in there, so tell me the difference between a chair that I purchased the first time.
It's, uh, I, I don't know for sure, but I'm gonna guess that, um, it's because when you have a, when you start, uh, or have a startup 911 Center, they'll let you furnish it, but after that, you have to replace.
But they'll pay for the councils, they pay for the councils.
I'll have to check for you, I will get you that answer.
I know I voted for this, so I know everything was applied.
I said I was guessing, so.
Could you double check on that? Because it doesn't, I, I agree with Mr. Yagowski, even though, but it doesn't make sense that they pay for the councils and everything else, and these are absolute necessity for the dispatchers that are there, so.
I can understand.
So can you double check on that?
Um, yeah, I, and I remember when John was here, and we went through the same thing, and they wouldn't let us buy him out of the twelve twenty-two at that time either, but I will check, and I'll have an answer, uh, either email it, or we'll have it at the next meeting.
I make a motion that it'll come out of Riverboat, pending that you not, that we cannot take it out of.
Okay.
911, because it doesn't.
We have a motion by Mr. Yagowski, seconded by Mr. Rosenbaum. And the question?
Yeah, did you opt for the cloth or leather?
Leather.
Leather, and is it the three thousand series or the four thousand?
Well, so there's actually three from the four thousand series, and the remaining would be five from the lower series.
So we are getting eight for this price?
Yeah, there's eight consoles, sir.
Yep.
And the cloth, be, to be honest, was shocking. We, we had a test cloth.
Yeah.
Chair, and every time you stand on it, it would shock you.
Oh, shocking, yeah, yeah. Okay, alright.
Gotcha.
Helps you awake while you're there, twenty.
Midnight crew, they need it. No, they're probably the busiest, I don't know.
And just for the record, the director did not opt for a chair, cause his chair is fine.
I did not.
Right, so we have a motion and a second, is there any other questions, comments? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Thank you.
Can I say one more thing, though? This is on the record, but this is, uh, nine-one operators in Indiana have been recognized as public safety officials, that was started here in LaPorte County. We started that project, Senator Bohachek, Bohachek has put it through committee, and we are now finally gonna be recognized as first response.
And it's made through the both houses?
It's been through both houses, so congratulations.
Fantastic, thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
Please pass that on to everybody else when you see them tomorrow. Thank you. Is there any other council comments?
I have something, Mr. Yagowski. Can I ask, uh, both the attorney and the commissioner to come up, if they, if they can, please, Mr. President?